Okay, everyone. We've called this meeting to order. And as we have begun the practice of the Pledge of Allegiance, we still have a flag. I would ask everyone who is so inclined to stand up, face the flag, take off any headgear. Pat, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, in the roll call, we are all present and accounted for. There's some agenda changes. Number O, I would like to have taken off. Your consideration to approve the Ed Foundation Board members. We'll table that until we have a list of board members, which is a procedural thing that we need to go through. So we'll delete that. Item, the new item O, will be the approval of the retirement request for Dave Davison. And the subsequent letter in the alphabet, which P, will be the approval to post and hire a Director of Operations and Maintenance. So those three addendums are changes. I would like a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Make a motion.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the minutes from the last two board meetings, the 24th and the 14th. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. We do have a very busy agenda this evening, Hope, so when we get down into the P, that means there's quite a bit going on, so we'll just keep rolling. Scheduled presenters. We have the teacher evaluation program. The way it looks now, it looks like a discussion item, but in reality, it's an action item, and we'll treat it as such. So, ladies, our presenters are here for the teacher evaluation program.
No. One of the gas down method, okay.
Okay.
Is that what we learned at school?
It is.
And we're in school.
Okay, so this teacher evaluation plan began with the state legislature passing a statute requiring all districts to develop a principal and teacher evaluation plan. And we approved, or you approved, the principal evaluation plan last year. And then this year, we worked as a committee of teachers and administrators to develop a plan for teacher evaluation on a committee where Mr. Bell and Mr. Hodges, myself, Katie Leese, Stephanie Bowen, Tony Meyer, Barb Templin. Anyone else?
Murray Mitchell.
Murray Mitchell, you're right. Thank you. So we met for several hours over the course of the year and developed a plan that I think is a good growth model for our teachers and an evaluation plan for our teachers that will provide us with not only a measure of how our teachers are doing, but provide them with some opportunities for growth and expansion in the roles. So I think to best go over the document that just was passed out to you, we'll look at page two, which is the introduction and the overview, and then we will go to the very last page, just page 24, and that just gives you a timeline of how this plan's implemented. So the plan's made up of three components. Component one is teacher practice, and this has been in place for a while, or most of them have been in place for a while. It's based on the Charlotte Danielson model, which is composed of planning and preparation, classroom environment, instruction, and professional responsibility. So those domains are outlined in your packet. There's a definition of those domains and the rubric for evaluation. Component two is student engagement. And component three is student learning and achievement. Teacher practice is the evaluation. Right now, it's been comprised of our administrators evaluating us. It's on a three-year schedule. We will be adding a peer reviewer to also evaluate or observe teachers. And then there's also a reflective statement by teachers that deals with that Charlotte Danielson model. Component two, the student engagement, again, is covered by domains two and three in the Danielson model. And then component three, the student learning and achievement, teachers will be developing a professional growth plan. They will be turning that into the administration each year, and that will be looked at and discussed with the administration at the end of the year. That growth plan will involve a SMART goal that's measurable, time-bound, achievable. So those are the three components. Any questions so far on our first page?
Does this go for all teachers tenured and tenured?
Yes. So then if you go to the very last page, page 24, this is a timeline, and this is just how the components are implemented. So as I stated earlier, it's a three-year model. So across all three years, year one, two, and three, each teacher will develop a professional growth goal, and that will be turned into their PLC team at the beginning of the year. Non-tenured teachers will have three summative evaluations each year. Then when you go down to the September through April, that is the part that deals with tenured teachers. So in year one, teachers are required to observe a peer, and that can be observing a peer in their own building, in their own grade level, or a different grade level. It could be a high school teacher observing an elementary teacher, or ALC, or also visiting another district. So we're required or asked to observe a peer and write a reflective statement.
And that, if not to evaluate the peer, is to learn from the peer.
Right. We find that would be a really great way to provide teachers with ways to explore and grow, learning from others that are in their profession. Year two, they're observed by a trained reviewer, and we talked about that being maybe done through the mentor program or the new assistant principal, but it would be someone that's been trained with the Charlotte Danielson model, separate from administration. And then year three, they have their formal observation by administration, which includes a pre-observation, an observation, and a post-observation with the administration.
So then in year two, when you talk about observing a trained reviewer, is that an evaluation process there?
Yeah.
That is?
Yeah. And then the April through May, that's where we go back to that professional growth goal, and each year, teachers will be meeting with the administration, going over their goal, providing data, and just discussing, was it an adequate goal? What did we learn from it? What growth did we find? And move forward with that. The points, the POCs down at the bottom of that chart are points of contact, and each of these items is a point of contact, is a face-to-face meeting with an administrator or your peer or your trained peer reviewer. So that's what those points of contact mean. So we presented it to the staff. I think they're on board with it. The administrators, again, have had the Charlotte Danielson model in place for several years, and so our staff is comfortable with that part of it. And they will be going over the plan and the model with the teachers again in the fall as we implement the full plan.
The way I'm understanding it, too, not everyone starts on year one. And you're probably looking at this going, oh, my gosh, this is overloaded in year three. They're already in somewhat of a cycle, and so the teachers and the administrators will work together to make sure that, you know, these guys don't get stuck with everyone on year three, and our new teachers come in and start out a new schedule. Everyone will be on a rotating schedule. So even though it's year one, two, or three, you know, Katie or Deanne could easily be on the three section and then starting over with the year one. Right? Just so you understand, it's almost like an ABC versus a year one, two, three, unless you're non-tenured, then it's the same. Does that make sense? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, the staff is dividing.
I just don't think that year three is the overload year.
Right.
So year four starts by year one, if you're on a regular cycle? Right. Some schools are calling them ABC, you know, which cycle you're on, some are doing one, two, three, whatever, but it is rotating so that you don't overwhelm your admin. And then anyone that's new to the district would just start with one or A and go forward from there.
So these are statutory requirements, but then they ask the teachers to devise and implement. So this could be different from district to district as far as how they-
The components are all the same.
The components are the same.
The requirements are the same.
Okay, so we use the Danielson model because it's the one we're most familiar with, and it seems to work the best for us.
Yeah, and I think most school districts in the state are using that model. We were given an option from the state to use the state model or to develop our own based on the state plan, and we had to use the components of the state model. But we felt instead of adopting the state model, we wanted to make our own plan to fit our district. So, yeah, the components come right from the state model. So all the districts across the state were given that, and we just pulled the things that were best for the falls. So between page two and 24, you'll see all the domains, the rubrics, the forms that the teachers need to fill out.
The administrators.
And the administrators. So you have the whole packet, but those two, we felt, were the basic outline that would give you an idea of what the plan is about.
And then how do you decide who the trained reviewers would be?
Again, I think that's still to be determined. I think that we have talked about the mentor program. Kay Savin's been trained with the Charlotte Danielson model. We've also talked about the new assistant principal possibly taking on that duty. It would have to be someone who has gone through the training to be an evaluator on the Danielson model.
And then we talked about, like, having a weeks week, and you have your observation done during that week. So that trained observer has that set aside, and then everybody gets their observation during that week.
So someone from the staff will be a trained reviewer, then? Is that right? Do other people take trained reviewers from outside their district?
Preferably, you don't want it to be someone, let's say, on staff. I mean, it could be someone off staff, like a retired teacher, or like we talked about Kay Savin with the mentor program. They're technically not teaching on staff. I mean, they're employed by the [inaudible]. So, I mean-
Right, districts have done it in different ways. I think that larger districts that have a larger budget take, give their teachers, maybe they're a .2 or a .5 reviewer, and so that's their job for part of their duties, is to be a trained reviewer, and they get, you know, main time from their classroom. But in our district, I don't know that that's the way to go. I think that we, the things that we've talked about with the mentor program and the assistant principal are the way we would most likely do it.
I'm just wondering, because sometimes in most positions, you have to be maybe tough-skinned.
Right.
You know, these are your peers, and it's like, boy, if you're gonna be effective, you want to be able to tell them exactly what you're seeing and what you feel.
Right, yep. Any other questions?
Can I add one thing? Just with regards to your comment, with the peer reviewer piece of that, the trained peer reviewer, the person that's being reviewed or observed is the one driving that observation. So it's not like that, you know, someone in that role wouldn't just come in and look at everything. They're gonna have a specific area or a specific component or domain that they're gonna look for. So it's really driven by them and saying, hey, you know what? I'd really like, you know, Deanne Coleman to come into my classroom, and, you know, I'm having trouble with just, I want to watch me manage my groups, or, you know, just how I handle all of the materials, and can I be more efficient than that? So it's not like it's a full-up, you know, observation or evaluation. It's really driven by that teacher. So, you know, it's not, in terms of that trained reviewer, it's not really a difficult conversation. It's more of a coaching piece, and here's what I saw. Use it if you want.
Will it be effective doing it that way?
We believe so, yes.
I think a lot of that, the answer to that question, a lot of it comes on who that peer reviewer is, and that's one of the reasons why we've talked about having Kay. Did I say the wrong thing?
The trained reviewer.
Alright. That's one of the reasons we talked about having Kay do that position, is because she is well-respected throughout the district, and we feel that her going into classrooms and being able to have that conversation at a collegial level as opposed to a supervisor supporting that level is gonna be different and effective.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
He's really gonna treat this as an actionator.
Yeah, sooner or later, we have to approve it. So we might as well get it over with unless there's some reason people think we don't need to, so.
I'll make a motion to approve as an actionator.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, ladies. Financial reports. Mr. Davison, you up? There you are.
I'm in for it.
Yeah. See, I told you you hadn't been here before. Further recognition.
The task to be in your agenda there is the, being part of the cash flow worksheets in the financial report. Just a couple of things to note. All the funds now are into Merchants Bank and the First Horizon Bank. First Horizon Merchants Bank account has been closed. It's been plenty long enough now for any outstanding checks to have gone through there and cleared, so everything's now at the one bank. And we do rotate every three years, and maybe at some point, another conversation about switching that to a five-year rotation, but that being three banks now in town. But currently, now it's all in Merchants Bank. Just a couple of things to note. This goes through the end of the fiscal year. We'll make it through again for the second consecutive year without any anticipation borrowing, and actually have a nice little cash fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. The county taxes will be coming at the end of May and being of June, although they're in there as estimates. As soon as I get the actual documents from the county, I plug in the actual numbers. And then two other ones to note are the inventory payments, the structured payment with them for 20 years, a portion from inventory, a portion from the city. Comes for about $300,000, receiving that at the end of May, being in June. The next couple pages are just gonna be comparison of the last month that's been reconciled. It'll be March 2014 to kind of compare against 2013. One thing to note, general fund, about $250,000 ahead of where we're at this point last year. Food service doing about the same as we were at this point last year. Community ads, a little bit ahead, $56,000. The debt service, down about $150,000 from last year, and what happened there is we weren't able to do a manual reduction in the levy for debt service. You're scheduled to receive 105% of your needs for debt service. We'd have an excess balance there. We were able to reduce it manually in our levy. This past year, we weren't able to do that. So we're set to fill our needs or our mortgage payment on the buildings, but that's the reason why the decrease in the debt service. We're all fine there. Trust and Agency, the scholarship, down about $7,000. A lot of scholarships are based on interest. There's just not a lot of money to be made on interest right now, and some of them don't have continuing donations put into it, so that's the reduction there. And then you'll see the OPEB trust fund, and that's the setup to pay for other employment retirement benefits, and that's set for our 10 years that are in balance there. And then Fund 47 is the OPEB debt service, and that's about where we're at at this point last year. The next couple pages are just gonna be the detail. We want to see what kind of comes in as receipts in each fund, or what goes out for checks out of each fund. Not a whole lot to note, other than a little larger receipts in general fund last year, and as a result of the state switching more towards the 90/10, and we got some cash back from the state budget forecast, and some of the cash they were withholding from the districts. And then the last thing to note, I talked about last meeting with the debt service. Payment had been erroneously put as open debt service instead of debt service, and those have been corrected, so now you see the true balance is in debt service Fund 7 and OPEB debt service Fund 47, so that is correct there. If you do have any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Report. Anybody have any questions?
I'll second.
Jerry has made a motion to approve, and Pat has seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Seeing no old business, under new business, we have the lunch report, personnel items, and attendance report under the consent agenda. All of these are considered routine items unless, for some reason, one of these areas should get pulled off for further discussion. So-
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approve of the expenditures. Anyone had a chance to review? 42015. That's just, is that our final payment for them?
It's the final contract payment. It's not the final cleanup payment, but the final contract payment. There may be a invoice that comes in with charges or orders for either a snowfall that didn't reach the amount allowable in the contract. Haven't received that from them yet. Usually, they'll come back once the snow's all kind of done, they'll kind of clean up some spots. They might have nicked with the sod or whatever, and after they do that, then they kind of give the service their final billing. That's the final contract payment.
That is our zippies bill for snow removal, for anyone who'd like to know that. Others? Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures. Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob for expenditure approval. Expenditures. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question on scoreboard.
Yeah, we had donations that came in for that. They'll be reimbursing. Some really significant people in town stepped forward and helped with that scoreboard. Bucky had come to us. It was beat up. You couldn't run it from the computer.
Which scoreboard are we talking about? What number? Oh, here, it's Fox, sorry.
Yep.
It's 42022.
That was matching funds. We had, he did go out and solicit and really came through.
Which one are we talking about?
The scoreboard, it's Fox. Right, yeah.
What originally installed, we bought a, maybe a subpar one, but we had other expenses as well, and that just didn't last.
They've done a lot of trying to rig it. It's just, it was done. It was done.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the approval of the expenditures, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the executive assistant HR coordinator contract for 2014 to 2018.
Yeah, I've been busy working on a lot of these contracts. You know, I won't get into specifics. I know that you have been able to look at those. If you have any exact questions, we can do that. I'll go ahead and highlight some of the highlights on each of these. The executive assistant HR coordinator contract is obviously Laurie Hanson. She has inherited a lot of human resources. Obviously, with the new healthcare reform that's come out, she's gotten a lot of those type of things, too. She is still very much under her colleagues, but she does three jobs that are, you know, at school here. She has been very good about taking small jumps. This year, we are gonna try to get her to a place that she's more comfortable, that we're more comfortable. But the biggest thing here is that we got a four-year contract out of Laurie, which means that all the training that we're pouring into her, and that we know that we'll have that for four more years. So the biggest, I think, biggest thing for her and for us is that we got a four-year contract out of Laurie, and I'm really excited about that. She's going through a lot of training, and I think it's really gonna benefit the district. So if you have any specifics, that was kind of the highlight of her contract.
I make a question to group. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the CE director slash activity director contract for 14 to 16.
And again, I'll kind of highlight that, you know, Jake comes to us. I don't know how much more I can add to him. I mean, his job, some people don't believe when I say I have a community ed director and an activities director, or being for us under the same umbrella, but he does a really great job with it. And for whatever reason, our district is working. So what we did in the teacher contract, we removed the stipend for activity director. He really should be under Fund Four, not Fund One, so we did some movement there. Obviously, won't impact the teacher's contract this last time, but it'll be taken off for the next one, so it won't be on Schedule C anymore. The other thing, Jake did get one more personal day. He was at two, and we did give him three. You know, he's got young kids, and that was important to him. And he's in the room. I think those were kind of the highlights of his contract. Again, I know that he's overworked and underpaid, but I'm really appreciative of everything that he does for the district, so.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the CE preschool teachers' work agreement for 14-16.
We'll have Jake actually do those. That's his contract.
This one and the next two are actually, we, I wanted to update our conditions of employment for PDAD employees. We haven't done it for a number of years. Really, this one, this first one here, the preschool teachers, is the one that's changed the most. You'll see that we added a pay scale for them. They previously hadn't had them. They've been hourly employees. So that kind of mirrors the teacher's contract a little bit. It's not quite what the teacher contract is, but we're going to, next year, we're gonna have four full-time preschool teachers. And we've really had trouble with continuity because we just have so much turnover. We just aren't paying on what they deserve. This year, we replaced four out of five. We're new this year. Luckily, we replaced our great staff from last year with a great staff again this year, and we're just looking to, you know, put them on something similar to a teacher contract. It's not a teacher contract. The pay scale is close, but I think it also gives them some incentive to improve themselves as, you know, they get their master's degree and stuff like that. It'd be a little pay bump for them. Nothing else really changed in there for preschool, which is actually nothing. That's the biggest change. You know, they're doing a lot of the things that the rest of our teachers are doing. They have their own PLCs. They go to staff development stuff. So just looking to get them closer to what the teachers are also doing.
Jake, do you see some legislation coming anytime soon to be required that they be a licensed teacher?
I certainly wouldn't be surprised.
I would be.
Right now, we've got one who is not currently licensed in the state of Minnesota. You don't have to be. She's actually our longest-tenured teacher. She does a great job. In fact, some of our previous teachers who have been here for a long time weren't licensed either, but I certainly would think that it'd be coming, that you'd have to be licensed. And like I said, this gives us some incentive to get licensed or to continually, you know, take more classes and get that next degree.
And does that impact our parent aware?
You know, it doesn't, but they do have to take classes. That was another thing I wanted to talk to you. We've made so many changes, like, you know, we accomplished this parent aware thing. They're doing that after hours. They had to take classes themselves to make sure that we got that parent aware certification.
So Jake, for the ones that aren't licensed, where do they fall?
They'd be that very first one. I think it's a zero or something on that.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the early childhood and school age care coordinator work agreement.
There's really no change here. We do have a pay scale for her as well. That reflects kind of the job that she does. Otherwise, no change in there. It just at least gives them an idea of what they're gonna be in the next couple of years.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Jerry to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration to approve the CE assistant work agreement for 14-16. You've been busy.
This one, this one, we have to leave.
This one, this one, we have to leave the one, there's really no change on this one, just updated, it reflects what Molly's currently doing. She does an awesome job. I don't know where I'd be without her, so. Really, no change on this one, and I'll just update it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to approve the head of food service contract for fourteen, sixteen.
Very, very little changes on this one. Actually, not much at all. The only thing that Wendy asked for was when we do contract out for, say, something that we cater or something like that, she needs to be paid from that group, not from, through us, and can set a different dollar amount if she needs to or whatever, because she's, she's on an hourly rate, she's not salaried, and so we talked about some of those things. But her contract, of all the contracts, as you can tell, changed very, very little.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Very agreeable group tonight. Consideration to approve the business manager contract for twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, this is another one that I just thought was really important, that we get to a four-year contract. The district office, there's so much training going on right now, that we really want to lock these people in for a little bit longer. It saves the district money over the long haul. Josh has actually agreed to get some additional training, and has agreed to a pay freeze for the, for the next four years. Simply because we're kind of, we're switching around some insurance things and some things like that. And so it's a benefit to the district, a benefit to Josh, and I'm really, really excited that we could come to a four-year agreement on this one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to set board meeting dates, May nineteen, June twenty-three, July twenty-eighth, August twenty-five, and September twenty-two at six P M. So we're moving to one a month for that time?
We're moving to one a month. The only month that we may have to add one back in, which we've done in the past, is August. Sometimes we get the principals working a lot on hiring people. For whatever reason, we've had people leave in the past in August, and we need to get those contracts signed and things like that. But we can add those if we need to. We just thought it's good to get these dates on the calendar, and that the public knows publicly when these meetings are going to be. Just logistics, really.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? You know, personally, I'd like to see that August and/or September, it's a big time for us, rolling into next school year. We often need some discussion there, and especially the August one, I think, so.
We usually end up adding one back, so just be aware of that.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the Cannon Falls Bombers fundraising list. A Pat McJay. Who wants to bite into that, Peter?
Any changes are denoted in italics, so anything to do with in italics, anything they're not going to do this year are struck out. The only thing missing on here, soccer, came to me today, soccer would like to run a fundraiser next year too, and they're currently not on the list, so.
Do they have any idea what they're looking at doing?
It would be some sort of sales. That's kind of the only thing I get told. It'd be some sort of, you know, it wouldn't be a service, it'd be some sort of sale.
And they're going to run them, boys and girls the same?
I would, I would guess. It was the girls' coach I talked to, I didn't talk to the boys' coach, so.
You know, one of the, one of the items, gosh, ten years ago, twelve years ago, that was discussed, is we just, we come to the community so often and ask so often that we're just trying to get some kind of mutual agreement, I guess, between the organizations and the school about the number of times. And at one time, it was about half this list, but you, you, you know, we want our kids in activities, and unless we get them some funding from the outside, I would assume that the costs of these things become astronomical. So, you know, we've almost come full circle again, and, but I don't see any other alternative to that, because each group is important, and, you know, in order for them to succeed, like everything else, they need funding.
Jake, if you don't mind, I know the answer to this, but I really want this to kind of be on the record, and I want the board to hear it. Under football is raffle, and we've run into problems with that in the past, not having a license to do so. Would you mind really quick explaining it, how they're going to go ahead and do a raffle?
That's true, football, they want to do a raffle this year, if you didn't notice that one. Gus and I talked, I talked to Jerry, he's the state high school league rep too, and talked to the states. The raffle license would be held by the booster club, but our athletes would be the ones selling those raffle tickets. A little bit different than what Dance is doing. Dance, in years past, the booster, it's not on their list, but their, Dance Parents Association does a raffle as well, where they hold the license, but those parents sell those raffle tickets. So this one's different, where just our kids are going to be selling those raffle tickets. No, there's no, no law saying a kid under eighteen can't sell a raffle ticket or anything like that. And the state high school league really doesn't have a stance, they just kind of direct me to the state of Minnesota. You know, there's no, no rule saying a minor cannot sell them.
We don't have any real jurisdiction per se over booster clubs, or do we?
We do when it comes to raffles a little bit. They're, they're not using a school license for this, so they're, they're doing everything perfectly fine. You would have some jurisdiction over a raffle, I think. I think a school board could stop a raffle if they wanted to. Dance has found great success in it, people like doing the raffles. We just can't hold the license to have one. It really is considered gambling, to a certain extent. I mean, it really works well for the organizations, but that can't be school-related.
And in the end, that money gets, has to come to the school eventually anyway, so we could define it if we felt it wasn't fundraised properly. That's what we started last fall, so if there's money that they're fundraising with, if we said, no, we don't want to use it, then I don't know what to do with it.
I also think that we do have somewhat of a responsibility, because based on what they do is a representation of what, what they're doing for our district and how we're representing our kids. So to some extent, I think we have a little bit of knowledge and decision as to whether or not it's appropriate. I don't think there's anything here that's really an issue. As long as, you know, what, sometimes I still look at, we're presented with this, yet there'll probably be more things out there that they're going to be doing besides this. It just kind of comes up, let's do it.
Well, that's my question is, you know, so if there's more stuff, and it's not on the list.
We've brought things, if there's a, if there's a fundraiser that comes up afterwards, Jake has always brought it to the board, and you guys have approved singletons kind of along the way. The ones that aren't on here, you know, like this weekend, the duathlon is a good example, where track provided workers, and they decided to give a donation to the school, which obviously goes to the track. That isn't really a fundraiser, it's, you know, kids donating their time, and then they're not getting paid, but the, the track team is. Those are the type of things that you wouldn't see on here, but if it's a fundraiser, they, we really feel that it should come to you.
So if someone, let's go with, let's go with putting the docks in the water.
Yep.
Is that a fundraiser, is that a, what do we define that as?
No, it's a booster club.
That's a booster club.
Football boosters do that themselves, so I suppose.
So should that be?
I see boosters on here, so is there a difference in the band boosters versus the football boosters?
There is.
Yes, very different.
So I just want to make sure we're fair with it, so that, you know, if it's not on here, so football, dock, things that they do in the spring, that doesn't necessarily have to be on here, correct?
Well, since it's not counted from the coach, who's organizing the tournaments, I think that's why.
Okay. They're their own nonprofit, that's why they don't have to be on there.
The rest of these are driven mostly by the coaches.
Okay, so the football booster club and the football booster club, two different entities, correct?
There's only one.
Yeah, the football booster club will do like the docks, but then, like football is a bad example, because they're going to be doing the raffle, but kind of in conjunction with the booster club. Who's, what's, how can we do it? Well, dance team, the dance parents do a raffle, and then dance team on here has, they're going to do their dance team calendar and cell phone cases. That's being driven by the coach, you know, otherwise it's a group of parents or the booster club driving the fundraiser.
So if this is coach-driven, it's on our list, if it's not coach-driven, then it won't be on our list.
Okay.
And if they're selling a product or a service, you know, remember, and Josh is probably a good example, his organization does a nice job of running a camp for kids. Ultimately, if he chooses to do that, you know, that's not really a product or a service. He's running a camp that can benefit his program, which we've encouraged a lot of the coaches to do. We like that we get our youth involved in a program, it helps the overall program, but yet benefits his, his group too, so.
And we know we're going to see one change on here, because one of the coaches, there is a student here that has no service or product. That's one, I'm not sure if it's still yet or not, but, so it's a top on our list, is going to get a new coach, so they might have their own idea of a fundraiser. So does this really matter to us? Yes, because this tells us whatever he's doing, so we don't have overlap from, maybe FFA wants to do a raffle too, it might be the same as a foot, you know what I'm saying? Somebody wants to do. I do and I don't. So we don't have any overlap on, not everybody's selling the same thing.
It helps so that we don't have ten book fairs. It allows Jake to say, no, you can't switch it to candy sales, because someone else already has that.
For in the controlled environment that we have. Outside of that, we don't have, okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a necessary thing to have, but it's still, we can talk philosophically about this all day. When you add booster clubs, which we maybe don't have, that's still to be debated, I guess, have any governing, when we add them in, and they start poking big money into the program, is there a need for these individual fundraisers? Because all of a sudden, there's a booster club promoting that.
The fundraisers here, the other distinction is that this money goes into student activity accounts, which are managed by the students. So for example, FFA food sales, all of that money goes into the FFA student activity account, and Mr. Pliscott can make suggestions on how that money's used, but it's really directed more for students, and there are some, there are some guidelines and restrictions on what that money can and cannot be used for.
All right, that makes sense. I've got a question as too, for businesses. Are businesses being bombarded, where, is there a way of designating or limiting certain fundraisers to certain groups that don't solicit businesses all the time, or, not saying that, but I do wonder if they're being?
None of these really would be driven by businesses. You know, Ed Foundation, we kind of let them do the businesses, and this is more for public. I mean, I, I can't imagine going to a business and saying, you know, buy some fruit. You know, you're going to individual people. You don't walk into someone's business and say, buy a gas card, kind of.
Oh, you absolutely do.
Yeah. As I say, it works, you know, depends, I've gotten, the golf has now is to sponsor for the golf tournament and different things, the business to sponsor that, individuals. I know I've got a raffle ticket for, I think, this deep club. You know, so there's, and that's where I'm kind of wondering, there are, this is a very dynamic list. Should there be guidelines to say, this is where you fall, and this is where you don't fall? So that if, like the new club soccer comes in, how, where would they fit and be with the trap shooting? Where do they fall, and how do they organize themselves? Because they've already done a raffle. I don't think they draw again, because I've been told they won, but, so.
It's natural, maybe.
We, we have to remember though, on some of these, like the bomber cards, that's, that's really supporting our business, has there some discounting there? Sure there is, but it's bringing people into the business. Are they just going to go just to get that free soda? No, they're going to go there and probably buy a burger or whatever, or pizza, or whatever they have in there. The spirit books the same way.
I don't think I disagree with anything, I just think, I think the biggest question here that I hear is, who fits into what? You know, boosters is separate, but at the same time, you've got band boosters, and I know Mark is very active in it, but it's on the list, so it's like, how do you organize, how do you identify that they should be on the list or they're not on the list? You know what I mean? And what guidelines? If they're on the list, do they have to abide by? Because if they're off the list, there's really no guidelines.
We created the list to give you guidelines. We did this for you, Rob.
Thank you.
This, this is your guideline.
You know what I think, though?
I know, this is for you.
I boosters probably seems confusing, but band boosters, football boosters, they're not the same. They work, they're.
They're very different.
So if you just put like, band program, maybe, you know what I mean? And that gets confusing, because the word booster is there, and it's just like.
Because you've got a lot of parents that like Slice of Jazz last night, was, I thought, parent-driven, with Mark being up there and coordinating and everything, it was great, but, yeah, so it's hard, you know, to even see the difference.
Here's a question, Jake, is everybody happy?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll second that motion. There's a motion by Jerry, and a second by Pat to approve the fundraising list. Any other discussion?
Well, that's good.
No, I, I think it's good discussion to have, and we do it every year, and it kind of brings things up to the surface again, so. All in favor of the list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the twenty-fourteen, fifteen resolution for the membership of the high school league.
Completely procedural, we have to belong to the Minnesota High School League. So Brenda, if you could read the resolution?
We've got a motion.
Yep.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jerry. Brenda, do you think?
Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League, resolved that the governing board of school district number two fifty-two, county of good youth, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic, athletic, and fine arts events, referred to in Minnesota statute section one twenty-eight C point oh-one, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. I'll start with Kurt.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passed us by a six-zero vote. Thank you, Brenda. Consideration to approve the cooperative sponsorship through the Minnesota State High School League for fourteen, fifteen girl soccer with Randolph. Katie?
Yep, just looking to open up soccer, just like track and cross-country golf and everything for Randolph, students from Randolph, we've had some people from Cannon Falls, also Randolph, contact me, see if we can get this done. Not a huge response, looks like from Randolph here, but we could use the numbers. Our numbers are good, not great last year, and we're looking to build that program, so it'll certainly help us.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Same thing, male program.
I'll make a motion to approve for the boys.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. We have, we did table the, one that's on your, on your agenda, in favor of consideration We did table the, one that's on your, on your agenda, in favor of consideration to approve the retirement request from Dave Davison. You know, when we, when we have long-term employees that depart, it's kind of a difficult proposition for us all, because they become an integral part of our program, whether it's education or facilities. But some are still tougher than others, and a man who's absolutely dedicated his, his life to our district, has decided to hang it up after a number of years, and it's gonna be most difficult for him, very difficult for not only staff, but his, his employees and his department, so this is a, this was kind of a, a wake-up for us, I guess. We kind of learned this not very long ago, that it was even under consideration, but again, some impact is more than others. Normally, what we do is we, we take this under advisement, and we vote, and we wish them good luck, but we'll just kind of move away a little bit from procedure here. I would, I've talked to Dave about maybe reading his own letter of retirement. He's consented to doing that, and so be very happy to have Dave, if you can get through it, Dave. Read your, read your own letter.
Sure. Yeah, as far as my retirement letter, I started with the school district in August 15th, 1973, going from $1.60 an hour to $2.95 an hour of benefits. The intent was to stay until something better came along, and I soon found out that it was, I was meant to do this. After forty years and ten and a half months, that something better, which has always been there, has come along. It's family, grandkids, and taking care of me. In the fall of '73, the school district had the old elementary school and high school, also the east and the west additions, and the high school were completed, which we're sitting in right now. We worked sixteen-hour days until schools started unpacking furniture and setting up additions. The crew back then consisted of seven and a half custodians. Through the years, there's the subtractions and additions to the facilities. We now have 112,000 more square foot of building, the equivalent of having another elementary school. We also have had the addition of girls courts and a whole lot of other activities, events, fields, tennis courts, track, maintained with the current crew of nine custodians. My mom, dad, two brothers, two sons, and two daughters. Have currently worked for the school district, or currently work for the school district, I guess it's in our genes. Always been committed and dedicated to the school district with my job and all the responsibilities that come along with it, or remain that way until my employment is complete. The easy button would be to stick a flash drive in my head and download all the info, but maybe next year. I remain dedicated, committed to getting all I can written down, laid out, passed on before I leave. I will also focus on completing all projects centered before I leave. It comes down to the pride I have in our school and community. We are the biggest show in town. I've always wanted the community to be proud of us. The show must go on. So, with that, I appreciate the opportunity to have worked for the school district, and will always support it. The time has come, though, that this old dog learned new tricks, so June 30th, 2014, would be my last day of the interview, too.
Well, I'd just like to say that I already had my cry session with Dave this morning. We had a really good session this morning, and I won't say much more, I'll save it for his retirement party, but Dave is the only person I text at 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m., 3:00 a.m. He and I, in my short time here, have been involved in a fire, flood. I held a flashlight for you until 3:00 a.m. with frozen feet while a water main broke, and we've had some really interesting adventures together. His wife refers to me as his work wife. Wifely so, I really do call him at all hours of the day and night, and I know that being a new superintendent, I couldn't have done it without Dave Davison, and that's truly how I feel. Like I said, we've already got our tears out this morning, but I, too, want to thank you for everything you've done for me and for this district. It hasn't gone unnoticed. Thank you.
So, during the fire or the flood, did you see Moses? Was he around? You know, I've told you this many times, Dave, and I'm gonna get all worked up, too, here, but I always, it always marvels me to come in this school and see how clean it is, and I know that you only got a handful of ice here. It's just, it's amazing to me. I've walked down that hallway at nine o'clock at night, and it shines, and I don't know how you do that. I'd like you to come over to my house and show me. I also hear from people constantly from out of town that they say, you know, I run into them downtown or something, it's, you know, we're just in town, our kids are playing ball. That's a, that's a great fieldhouse, that's a great gym, that those baseball diamonds in the softball fields out back are amazing. Wish we had that. Had some friends come over from Elsor for track and field. Wish we had this back here, wish it was in this shape. So, I, myself, just kudos to you, because I'm with Beth. I mean, I've, you know, I've seen you, I've seen you running around at 10:30 at night, letting people in, letting people out, you know, and fixing stuff that needed to be fixed, and, and, you know, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of districts don't get that, so, and I wish you the best, too. You deserve it.
I know you only started out with $1.60 an hour, Dave, but when I was in fifth grade, I remember you had that van, this just beautiful van, I thought you were the richest man in the world.
The van was from Stileback then for a D8.
The van was only $100, Brian.
It was cool. And I don't know, our new addition, if it looked like it does, what thought you, Dave? You did a very nice job.
Well, there's, there's not really a department within our whole campus here that isn't touched by facilities. You know, sometimes you compartmentalize, I guess, and, you know, you're, you're in charge of this area or this area, but we all know that if we want to get something done here, it goes through Dave, and eventually goes through some of the people and the staff, so, you know, you just can't trade that, and you're a man of integrity who's always looked out for us. So, having said that, along with the approval for Dave's retirement comes Lori, as our HR person, has drafted a memorandum of understanding, which kind of works out the details for retirement. So, that will be available to board members if they choose to see it. It's more procedural than anything else that we do with our, our very long-term employees. So, I would look for a motion to approve the retirement of Dave stated in his letter.
I'll make a motion.
That's a motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Dave.
Good job.
Item P, along with that, we have to find a new Dave, which is gonna be a big hole to fill, for sure. Consideration to approve post and hire for the director of operations and maintenance position.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
To post, seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. So, moving on down to reports. Board members?
Anything for the cause.
Great turnout for the Ed Foundation annual fundraiser last Saturday night. This year is held at the Cannon Golf Club. Unofficial numbers that have come in are just north of 40K raised this year. Numbers should be, official numbers should be in within a day or two, but that's what I got from the other board members. So, kudos to the community and everybody that volunteered. The Ed Foundation people, I don't know, I've, I've worked on eight or nine of them, I've attended, I think, every single one since they first started, and these guys just, they work year-round on this, on this fundraiser. It's, it's amazing to see how organized they are, and, and they spend a lot of time doing it, so, kudos to them, lots of, I, I know I speak for all of us when I say we're very appreciative. And just another note, the Beacon reported last week, the 850K that has been given back, that kind of blew my mind, I knew it was up there, and, you know, I've been to quite a few meetings over the years where they're making those decisions. You know, I don't, I have nothing to do with it, just sit there and listen, but, but anyway, yeah, that, when I saw that number, it was, it was quite astonishing to me, what they've put back into this community, so, or into this, this school. So, kudos to them, and again, thanks to everybody who came out, supported, had a great time, and spent, spent a little money. Stephanie?
Get her job.
Okay, anyone else? Thanks for that, Pat. Student report. Brian, what do you got for us?
Well, first of all, I'll just kind of run down what's been going on at the school, and then I do have some sheets that I'd like to show you about my progress with the school logo. And usually, when I read the sports reports, I usually just go back one game and then also report the next one, but I talked to a couple of the baseball guys this afternoon, and they wanted me to make sure that I said that last Friday, they defeated the number three rain, excuse me, Rochester Lords. And then this past Saturday, they had a double header against Pine Island, which was split, so they won one, lost one. And then they're supposed to have a game tomorrow against Triton, depending on if it's, if it'll still be going on. There's been some cancellations this week due to rain. Softball, last Friday, they played against Wabashaw, they won, and tomorrow, they also play against Keston, again, if the weather permits. Golf, last, last Thursday, they played at Zamperota, and overall, the team ranked second. And for girls, they, last week, I don't know the day, but they played against Triton, and they won. They won that one. Track, last Tuesday was their last, was the last varsity match, I believe, because I think the one, they're supposed to have one later in the week last week, but it was canceled because of the weather. But the girls placed second, the guys placed first. Last Friday night also, I reported at the last meeting that the student council was going to have our parents sign out, which we did. We had about thirty kids show up, so for the first time having that, I'd say that was pretty good success. Last night, like we said, we had the Slice of Jazz. It was a good turnout, I was there, I was on stage for a portion of it, but this Saturday's prom, it's coming up really fast here. I gotta get my tux. But other than that, I think that kind of wraps up what's been going on and what's happening. I'll just pass, so, these sheets here.
Well, you're passing that out, that you've had a couple of meetings with student council, right? In regard to this?
In regard to this, yep. After the school board meeting, the last one a couple weeks ago, that was the first thing we talked about on Thursday, on our Thursday morning meeting, and right away, the first thing that I wanted to do was make sure I got the community as involved as possible, so I kind of went through my contacts, I contacted some of the school board members. I had a meeting with Jake Mitchell. Let me see, I also talked with Dave Davison, who, I mean, by the way, wealth of information, I'm so happy that, that we could have him involved in this process as well, because we really do want to include the history of the town, if possible, kind of in the representation of the logo. You see on the title, that doesn't say "school logo," but "school crest," and the reason for that, when I met with Jake Mitchell, you know, we kind of talked about the, the whole idea of the logo, and that we really don't want to discourage or kind of put, or kind of say no to using logos that are currently out there, such as, I mean, we looked at it at the last meeting, you know, ones like, you know, like Cannon with the ball coming out, or the CF, or the new one that's been being used as well. And, and we also understand that sports teams especially, they're gonna be using, and they're gonna be creating and modifying over the years their, their sports logos, I guess, that they use every year. So, I guess with the approval of the school board, the direction we would really like to go in with this is more of like a school crest, kind of just to represent the school and the district as a whole more, not just the high school, the entire district, you know, something more official that would go on, say, diplomas, stationary, whatever, just something more official that, you know, when new people come onto the school, that's kind of what, hopefully, in the long run, is what people will, will start to identify with. So that's why I'm really trying to take my time with this, and trying to get as much input from outside sources as I can. We've looked at a number of different crest designs and things that will be incorporated in it as well. One particular design, the reason I'm bringing this up is because one of the headings is words that represent our school. One of the logos that Jake actually found, and a number of others, when I did a little research, they had three words that were incorporated in the logo that represent the school as best as they can, so, obviously, not all schools, they may have the same types of words, but I mean, they're, they vary, and so on. Here, I just included a list of ones that, that I got from some of the logos that I looked at, and I think at the last meeting, I think we agreed that we wanted to get the student audience involved as well, as well as alumni, but more so the, on the current student body right now, of who this will represent. So, I mean, I don't know exactly how I'm gonna go ahead, ahead, ahead with picking the words or whatever that would be incorporated, but maybe have some kind of a voting system, we'll maybe as a student council, we'll kind of go through the list and add words or whatever, and we'll kind of whittle it down like that, and then maybe have the school vote on it. And then as for the crest design, I already have a number of interested students who have actually started to sketch out some designs, so that we can start that process here. I guess, is there any questions? I know that, it says on here that May 19th, is that our next school board meeting? Is that the last one of the school year? So then, by that time, would it be possible, maybe because I know that you guys want to approve it, would that be something that we might want to look towards approving at that time or at a later date?
You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we had an actual timetable, it's just like, there's so much abstract ideas out there, and you're pulling them all together very, very well. You've had conversation with Mr. Hodges on this?
Oh, yes, yes.
And Jake as well, so, yeah, I think, you know, the more consortium thinking on this, the better, but I would certainly like you to be an integral part of this, even if it morphs out a little farther into May, because you put a lot of effort into it, as evidenced by your workbook there. It's fascinating.
I like finding it.
You know, as long as we're working toward it, I think that's what, what we, we'd all like to do, and the crest design for diploma is just a great idea, and again, that's, I think Mr. Hodges had mentioned that before, you know, we're not just about sports, we're about so many other things, and just to be identified that way is, is good for all of us, so. So I would say keep working on it and don't necessarily use that May timetable. It would be nice to do, but, you know, this is, this is something that will carry on quite possibly for a number of years, so we really don't want to push it as much as...
You can come back from college. Is that your issue here? Are you saying you're not coming back or what?
From a whole perspective, you have it as a student. He hasn't got a diploma yet.
Yeah. We can hold that diploma. Say Thomasville.
Keep moving forward, use the interaction of, of Mr. Hodges, Mr. Bell, if need, so inclined, certainly our A.D. And just keep going, you're doing well.
Keep your Monday nights open.
Right. Just a cool month.
Thank you for the effort here, that's...
Yeah, it's been a lot of fun so far.
Just so far.
We'll keep going.
Very exciting, you know, the direction.
Okay, we don't, we don't tax our principals at this meeting, do we?
Or superintendent.
Or superintendent. Upcoming meetings, you see the upcoming dates there and for our next meeting on the nineteenth, nineteenth, there's a variety of things that were, that are on there. If you see any reason to add some things, just contact Lori or Beth and we'll get them on for the next agenda.
Just to add on, we will have the social studies teacher and the art teacher ready for you to hire on May 19th.
Nineteenth. Okay, that's good. Two more items on there. Public forum. Anyone that wishes to speak for the cause, this is your opportunity for school-related Done. Doesn't give you much time to think, does it? Okay, having said all that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.